We'd like to go ahead and get started. Thank you. We'd like to go ahead and get started. We are back in session from recess with nothing out to report. And I need to have a motion for adjournment of the special meeting.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition. Thank you. Okay, and moving into the 7:00 PM regular city council meeting, we have a quorum, so we can begin. And can we start with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Meyer? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Pearson?
It's my turn. I am present. Thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
I'm here.
Mayor Meyer?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we going to announce the presence of students before? Are we just waiting for that item?
That's entirely up to your discretion.
I'd like to also announce that we have student guests with us this evening who are shadowing us. You'll hear more about why they're here a little bit later, but in the meantime, hopefully you will welcome them all. And they are learning as we go, and we're going to potentially be leaning over and speaking to them as we go through this process. So thank you for your patience. Could we do a special roll call of our guests? Is that allowed? Who are we pointing at?
Our city clerk is in another meeting at the moment.
Oh, okay.
But...
Our student city clerk.
I'd be happy to stand in.
I guess you're qualified.
I don't know. Did you hear roll call?
Would you like them to announce themselves?
That would be lovely.
Okay, let's do that instead. Okay, maybe we should use it this way because it'll be easier for you to hear.
My name is Hazel Allen Brown, and I'm shadowing the mayor.
My name is Jayden Spears, and I'm shadowing the vice president.
Mayor, sorry.
My name is Julian Rosa Jimenez, and I'm shadowing Jovita Mendoza, the city council.
I'm Alex Lawfridge. I'm shadowing Councilman Orlemans.
And I'm Rez Wilson. I'm shadowing Councilman Fay.
Maloney. Maloney, I got them mixed up. I'm very sorry.
I'm Juliana Page, and I'm shadowing the city attorney.
I'm Nitya Quigley, and I'm shadowing the city manager.
Missing anyone? Okay. We are going to get into presentations and related public comments. The public comment time for tonight's items will be three minutes each. In order to ensure that all speakers feel welcome to share their views, members of the audience are kindly requested to refrain from applauding or speaking to the council from the audience without being called upon first. So we will be presenting the recognition of outgoing city manager Tim Ogden. And I guess we do that first before we bring in the comments on that. Okay. Bear with us a moment. There's a few components to this.
This is on. Ooh, yeah, it is. Well, not bad. Maybe I don't need this. So I guess I will start this off. I would like to start off Diane Burgess, Supervisor Burgess from Contra Costa County, from Contra Costa County has given a certificate of recognition to Tim Ogden for his five years of service to city council. She apologizes she couldn't be here, but she's out of the areas.
Hi. It's too loud. So I would like to present you with this clock. And it says, "An appreciation of service, Tim Ogden, City Manager, 2020 to 2025." Thank you. And I just want to thank you for your service to our city and your commitment as a resident, as a council as well. Thank you for everything that you've done. And thank you also for your family for putting up with you while you were being here as well. Thank you. Thank you.
And last, a five-year appreciation of service and a wish for a very good future for you and your future endeavors. Thank you.
Here's a plaque in recognition of your five years of being the city manager.
Thank you, mayor and council. Appreciate these honors. It's been an absolute privilege to serve this community for the last five years. We've accomplished a lot of great things and have made some great friends here working at City Hall. You won't find any better, more qualified staff than we have here helping manage the city as well. I'm going to leave with a lot of tender mercies and tender memories of the stakeholders and the residents that I've met, the problems that we've solved together. And again, this is a beautiful community with lots of opportunity ahead. And just want to thank the mayor and council for your leadership and guiding and directing this city. It's a wonderful city to live and work and play in, and it's got a bright future. So again, thank you for the privilege of serving here. And to my executive team, thank you for serving with me and being such great stewards of the city. And Darren, all the best to you in my stead. So thank you.
We can now move into public comments related to that agenda item in the presentation.
First speaker I have is Olga.
Good evening. Oh, my gosh, I'm sick. Good evening, mayor, city council members and staff, and especially city manager Tim Ogden. I'm here first and foremost as a citizen since 2003 of Brentwood, also as a chamber member and as a rotarian. And I want to express my heartfelt appreciation for you, Tim Ogden, as our city manager for the past five years. Tim, your leadership has been a steady force in our city. But what truly sets you apart from all the rest is your willingness to serve in every capacity, big or small. You just don't lead from the front, Tim. You show up, you roll up your sleeves, and you work shoulder to shoulder with your community. I've seen that time and time again. At our Rotary events, Tim, you have been more than a supporter. You've been an active participant. At our Sweetheart 5K, you delivered the opening speech and pep talk with great humor, as well, I'm sure you remember that, as well as handed out cups of water to refresh runners and walkers at the finish line. That kind of hands-on involvement speaks volumes. It shows a deep commitment, not just to your role as city manager, but to this community and the people who live here. Your support of our city, Rotary, the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, has made a lasting impact on all of us. We thank you for the large things that you led with vision and for the smarter, smaller things that you did with your heart. Brentwood is better because of you. Myself, my family, and many, many others will surely miss you in our city, Tim. God bless your path. And as we know, when God closes a door or makes it kind of hard to open or squeaky, he also opens a larger window. And just judging by all the comments and the welcoming to your new position on LinkedIn that I'm reading about, you're on to a beautiful vista, bigger and better things. Good luck on your new adventure. And it's with all my heart that I say thank you for your service, Tim. Thank you so much, and we wish you all the best. Thank you.
Julie?
Hi. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. I am Julie Decker. I'm the immediate past president of the Rotary Club of Brentwood. I wanted to take, we want to take a moment to recognize and thank Tim Ogden, a dedicated rotarian, an exceptional city manager, and an all-around outstanding human being. Tim's leadership has left a lasting impact on our city and our Rotary Club. His thoughtful guidance, steady hand, and genuine care for the community have made a difference in ways that words can only now start to express. In grateful recognition of your outstanding leadership and dedicated service as city manager, and in appreciation of your unwavering commitment to the values of Rotary, your vision, integrity, and deep care for this Brentwood community have left an enduring legacy. We thank you for your partnership, your friendship, and the example that it means to lead with integrity and heart. As you move on to your new opportunities, know that you carry with you the appreciation and the best wishes of all your fellow Rotarians. We love you, Tim. We're going to miss you. And we have a certificate of appreciation that we'd like to give to you. I guess we can come up, is it all right to come on up and give that to you?
And Rotarians love pins, so we also have a service above self pin for you.
City manager of Brentwood, California, in recognition of your outstanding leadership, community partnership, and membership in the Rotary Club of Brentwood. Your dedication to public service and commitment to collaboration reflect Rotary's model of service above self. With sincere gratitude presented on this 22nd day of April 2025. Thank you so much, Tim.
Thanks.
Adam?
Before you speak, Adam, my apologies, but I did want to remind everyone that we've asked everyone to not applaud or make comments so that everyone feels equally heard and respected as everyone's trying to make comments. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council, and staff. I didn't write anything, but I just wanted to speak from the heart, speaking as a resident, a business owner, president of the Chamber of Commerce, and fellow Rotarian. Thank you, Mr. Ogden, for your time and your service. I appreciate all the dedication and the hard work, the support for the business community. It was definitely helpful to our assistant city manager, Mr. Daring Gell. You have some big shoes to fill, but I know you'll step up to the plate. I know our city's in good hands. Thank you.
Gerald?
So I wanted to tell just two quick stories about Mr. Ogden and my interactions with him. I first met Tim Ogden in March of 2020 at the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce Gala. And we, that was my first year I was going to become president. I had all these grand plans. Grand, I tell you. The very next week, the whole city got shut down for COVID. The very next week. And then, all in a sudden, we're in the office. We can't get in the building. We can't do the things that we needed to do. Nobody knew what to do. Tim stepped up with guidance. We worked together when nobody knew which way the sky was falling from. So he was there. He was a steady force. And then a little bit later, we decided, or I shouldn't say we, the previous assistant manager wanted to put kits in the hand of business owners. And we worked together to put kits, COVID kits, in the hand of business owners, coming up with packages to help the business community. That was the type of person and is the type of person that Tim is when times are tough and you don't know exactly what's coming and where you're going. Tim found a way. He was a helpful voice of guidance when the earth wasn't exactly stable, when we didn't exactly know what to do. So I want to thank him for his years of service. I wish him the best of luck. You'll continue to do great things. I'm proud of you. And to the city council, thank you for everything that you do. I was supposed to acknowledge you before I started speaking. My bad on that one. But thank you, city council. Thank you, Tim Ogden. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. We can move to the next item, which is regular public comments.
At this time, the public present in the council chamber are permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items listed under informational reports or on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, and new requests. Comments for the meeting's detailed agenda items or business items should be made when those items are called. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. The microphone will be muted when the timer expires. We did receive three written public comments prior to this meeting, which are summarized on the screen. The first card I have is Dani.
Here we go. Trigger warning to the xenophobes and the homophobes out in this audience tonight. There are going to be a few of you that are going to feel very uncomfortable when I'm finished. Start with the definition. "Grooming is an action or behavior used to establish an emotional connection with a vulnerable person and sometimes the victim's family to lower their inhibitions." I am the biggest supporter of free speech. But I must remind you that no one has the right to determine how I respond to that speech. Last session, a small group of xenophobic and homophobic groomers brought children to speak under the guise of asking for a farm fest. Let me be crystal clear. Not everyone who came to this session, nor those who want a farm fest, feel this way. Like I, many, many, a mom, a dad, grandma, grandpa, we're bamboozled. If you recall, I was the second speaker. I supported the farm fest, something that would be unique to Brentwood. Then I found out the hidden agenda. No one else will say this out loud, but it needs to be heard. And here we go. A small group of straight white men and women are jealous because they can't have a parade of their own. Think about it. This small conclave of groomers don't want to be around people of color or LGBTQ. That's fine. That's reality. But to blow the usual dog whistles of wanting families to be safe, wanting old-town Brentwood, and all that other nonsense is tiring. We all know what you mean. Unfortunately, the KKK, Proud Boys, and other hate groups tarnish the term "white pride." No one is stopping any of you from putting in a permit. We all know you won't, and we all know why. But to use kids and unsuspecting moms and dads to promote an idea that has nothing to do with Brentwood but your own fear and hate has to end. Like any groomer, be it pedophiles, xenophobes, or homophobes, you should have Child Protection Services check in on you.
Paul?
Good evening, city council, staff. We've been going rounds and rounds, those of us that represent the hall with the fire department and the county in regards to what's happening with the property and the fire station next to us. At one of the last commission meetings and planning meetings, we'd asked for a SEQA. The planning department asked for a SEQA as well. Response back from the fire department was they were not required to give a SEQA because it was a like-for-like building, so there was no need for one. The old building that was there was a single story. And I have not had the opportunity to fully analyze everything here, but there was no full kitchen. There was no sleeping quarters. It was a single story and many, many other things. I have the full set of plans for the new fire department. It's two stories, 30 feet tall. It has a full kitchen. It has a full gym. It has a full meeting room. It has an above-ground veranda with a garden on it and a place for people to actually get out and relax. It has parking, storage in the back. There's not a single thing about this building that is like-for-like, that is anywhere similar. That would be like somebody saying that my friend Mike and I are identical twins, right? Not even, we're both humans, but there's nothing like-for-like between Mike and I. I'm 6'3", 330 pounds, and I growl everywhere I go. Mike is a much gentler person than I am. My point being is that by making this claim, the fire department, straight up across the board, is showing nothing but contempt for veterans, for local businesses, for the planning commission, for the city council, for the mayor, and everybody in this building. Because that is an outright fabrication, the likes of which is just stunning. There is nothing like-for-like between the old fire station there and what they're proposing to put in. So I'm asking, for the sake of all of us here and for the dignity that we all have as people, to not allow the fire department to come out and say it's a like-for-like and try and use that as an excuse to not do a SEQA. It is imperative that they be forced to do a SEQA. Because if they don't have to do one, then anybody else that comes through here and wants to make a specious claim of like-for-like can then justify they don't need a SEQA in the same turn. So please, for everybody in this town, do not let the...
The speaker's time has expired. Estrella?
Okay, hi. Sorry, I'm still bad at this, but I'm going to give it a go. I'm here to just touch on the previous agenda item to amend the ban on tattoo shops in the downtown area. We would love to see this back on the agenda for a vote instead of it being kind of in limbo. I just wanted to point out the city of Brentwood already allows tattooing in the downtown specific plan. It's listed as permanent makeup, which is also known as cosmetic tattooing. The city of Brentwood states that the definition of a tattoo parlor means, sorry, "any establishment that places an indelible mark or figure upon the body by assertion of pigment on or under the skin or by the production of scars." Sorry. As someone who offers cosmetic tattooing and owns a local tattoo shop, that definition is also not just for the traditional form of tattooing, but it also is the same definition for permanent cosmetics. So I would just like to point that out. Also, our online petition is at almost 650 signatures from residents. And signatures from downtown Brentwood business owners is at 30 for support of lifting the ban. Thank you.
Karina, followed by Mike, followed by Dan.
Hello, Mayor Meyer, city staff, and city council members. This is Karina Helvey once again on behalf of the Brentwood Youth Commission. I just wanted to take a moment to share some of our recent progress and upcoming plans. As we're celebrating Earth Day today, I also want to take a moment to reflect on the incredible success of our recent Community Day of Service. With over 600 volunteers participating in 25 diverse service projects across the city, the turnout was so inspiring. Volunteers collected more than 1,500 pounds of trash, removed 15 tires from local creeks, assembled 200 kindness bags, wrote 350 encouraging letters and cards, and donated 700 pounds of food and clothing to the families in need. And in addition, the numerous beautification products that helped refresh and revitalize public spaces, making Brentwood cleaner and more vibrant, were so phenomenal. The Brentwood Youth Commission was so proud to be involved in this powerful citywide initiative. It was such a meaningful way to give back, and we're so grateful to have been a part of it. You will definitely be seeing us again next year. We're also excited to announce our youth-friendly business of the month for April, which is Menchies Frozen Yogurt. Menchies is a longtime favorite in our community, known not just for their delicious treats but for being a safe, positive hangout space for youth. Their involvement in local events and commitment to creating a welcoming environment make them a standout. I still remember back in elementary school when I was attending Ron Nun, and I had to read 10 books just to earn a free Menchies ice cream. And let me tell you, it was so worth it. It's just those kinds of memories that show how deeply Menchies is tied to youth engagement and encouragement. And lastly, we're so thrilled to remind everybody here that the Brentwood Multicultural Fair is coming up on Saturday, April 26. This is one of the most exciting events of the year, a celebration of the rich diversity that makes our city so special. Students from all over the Brentwood area, from Liberty and Heritage and whatnot, will be participating, representing cultures through music, dance, art, fashion, and food. It is a beautiful opportunity to learn, connect, and celebrate the many backgrounds that make up our shared community and our wonderful city. The Youth Commission is so excited to lead this event, and we cannot wait to see everybody there. And like always, we appreciate your guys' continued support of the Youth Commission's efforts. We're so eager to keep working to make our project a success, and thank you all.
Mike?
Good evening, mayor, city council members. I want to urge the city of Brentwood to take...
to take a proactive step in solving the current controversy surrounding the proposed Fire Station 94. Back in 2005, as a part of the Barrington development, a parcel in Sand Creek was specifically identified as an intended replacement location for the old downtown Fire Station 54. The parcel near the Sand Creek and Lower Creek is still under the city ownership and is listed as a city surplus parcel. I suggest that the city reach out directly to the Contra Costa Fire Protection District and offer this land to the use of the new, for the new Fire Station 94. Let's consider the logic. Brentwood's population center is no longer concentrated downtown. The city's growing rapidly to the west, especially along Sand Creek corridor. Placing a fire station on Sand Creek would put the emergency services closer to where the people of Brentwood live today and where the future growth is headed. From this location, response time to downtown would still be under five minutes, which is within the acceptable emergency standards. Now, one argument we heard from the Fire District is that Sand Creek doesn't go through to Sellers, potentially increasing response time to Discovery Bay and Byron. But let's be realistic. There are already multiple fast, there are multiple fast and efficient routes from Sand Creek to Sellers. Fire engines could use Garren Parkway to Chestnut or Sunset, both of which are directly to Sellers. And of course, Brentwood Boulevard is another notable route. This is not a roadblock. This is a solvable routing opinion, option. Let's also consider this big picture. Fire Station 94 on Bixler currently covers Byron and Discovery Bay. Because there is no fire station on the east side of Brentwood right now, Fire Station 99 has been responding to Brentwood, stretching of their resources. But once a new fire station is built on Sand Creek, the burden will ease. Station 99 can go back and focus on the east side of Sellers, which Sand Creek Station takes care of the core. That's good planning and good strategic plan. Frankly, we are disappointed that the Fire District is not willing to consider alternatives. But maybe they just need a little help. Maybe the city step up and formally inform the land, or offer the land from, was originally planned for to replace Fire Station 54. They would finally see that there is no better solution. One-
Next speaker is Dan, followed by Mike, followed by Brent.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for letting us speak. I'd like to add a couple things to what Michael just finished. And that was in 2005, a study was conducted titled "Primary Site Evaluation: Fire Station 54 Relocation, Brentwood, California," by Loving &amp; Compost Architects. The study evaluated relocating the original downtown fire station, Station 54, to Sand Creek. We have requested this report, but no one can seem to find it. I'm sorry. That said, the title alone makes it abundantly clear that the intention at the time was to move the station to Sand Creek and not rebuild it. And as far as Sand Creek ending just past Garren Parkway, that's the urban limit line. And if the Fire Department doesn't know that, the Fire Department is in trouble. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Michael Clement. I'm born and raised veteran here of Brentwood for 60 years. I'm here to talk about the like-for-like issue with the Fire Department. You know, right now, the veterans should be putting together our celebration for our Veterans Hall turning 100 years. That's without a doubt. But right now, we're using all our time, money, and energy and resources in being here and not at the Veterans Hall trying to plan our event for our community, our veterans that are out there wanting to come and see the Hall. So I'm a little upset about that because we're here having to stay at our case for the next 100 years. But so be it. Anyway, you're gonna have an $8 million Fire Department right there in that small little parcel right next to a 100-year-old building? I mean, that makes no sense at all. You know, they had to go ahead in eminent domain, the left side of that property line, and they have to take over 18 feet of the veterans' property in order to accomplish this building construction. Now, we all know that's not like-for-like if we were just gonna go ahead and examine it from that point of view. It's just ludicrous. It's ridiculous to sit here, from a common sense point of view, from a common man, to look at that parcel and say, "Oh yeah, it's exactly the same." Ain't happening. I'm not gonna believe that. Because no matter how you look at it, you can't put a square peg in a round hole. Just doesn't fit. And then, the place cannot even grow with the community. Right now, we're at 60,000 residents. We're gonna get built out to 80,000 residents? What's gonna happen when you need to put a ladder truck there in that $8 million facility? Are you gonna have enough money to build on Sand Creek or another location? I don't know. I don't, that'll be a good question. But I know one thing, you're not gonna be able to build it there because you have no room for a ladder truck if you need to have one. And if those needs do arise, well then, you know, we're just gonna have to sit back and wait. But it just seems like a waste of money, time, and effort in order to try to construct that piece of property. Not only that, but if one has to win, and the Fire Department already got what they want, then that Veteran Hall is gonna go somewhere. And then, where does that leave the veterans? In some office park somewhere? That's what they're gonna tell us that we have to meet? Just like they went ahead and did to Pittsburgh? I don't know. I just got a bad feeling in my stomach because it didn't work for the Fire Department or didn't work for the Police Department. You know, when they were over there on Pine Street, and they were there at the park, they had to grow with the community, so they found a nice, beautiful location over there on the outskirts of Brentwood. The post office right across the street, that used to be the post office. I don't know if you guys know that or not. But they had to move that. Why did they have to move it? Because it outgrew the community. Where it's at now, you got more boxes, a bigger place to conduct your business. You got more parking. And where it was originally, it just couldn't sustain itself. They didn't have enough place for the mail trucks to park. Because why?
Next speaker is Brent, followed by Don, followed by Ian.
Thank you, Council. The month of June is fast approaching, and with it, the potential of a pride parade. I recently saw in a news clip on NBC Bay Area showing a video of the DEI Committee requesting that the city use staff time and city funding for a pride parade in Brentwood. It is not the role of the city government to endorse any special interest group using taxpayer funds. If the community, not the government, wants a pride parade, then that needs to be organized and funded by the residents living in Brentwood. This is in keeping with the city's response to the idea of a farm fest. An outside group needs to organize the public event and ask the city for a permit, and the city can provide traffic control. The city should be organized, the city should not be organizing a pride parade. That is a misappropriation of public funds. The NBC Bay Area news clip also included a section showing social media opposition to the city's proposed pride parade. I would encourage, I would like to send out a call to everyone in this community who disagrees on Facebook to physically show up in opposition. Physical presence and voicing your concerns makes a difference. Regarding the location of the flag, I am glad that the city would like to make certain that the American flag is prominent in the public square of this community. In reading through the agenda and its attachments, I learned that on June 13th, 2023, by motion, the City Council directed staff to fly pride flags outside the City Hall on the existing flagpoles. One in front of City Hall and one in front of the community center. And the flag needed to be flown as soon as possible in the month of June. There should be no flying of any flags other than those that reinforce the shared history of our nation, meaning the US flag representing our republic, the California flag representing our specific state joined to the republic, and the flag of Brentwood. If the flag of one special interest group is flown by the city, then the city is obligated to fly all of them. Thank you.
Don?
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for listening to us veterans as we come from week to week to talk to you. I'm not gonna talk about the fire station. I want to talk about our 100 years of service to the community of Brentwood. A lot of people don't know that the Hall is now turning 100 years. And in addition to that, I don't know how many, we can't even count how many quinceañeras, weddings, funerals, public events, crab feeds that have happened there in service to this community. At one point in time, it was used as a roller rink. At one point in time, when the city didn't have offices, they met, at the age of veterans, to continue to serve the community for the next 100 years. And we're hoping to get past some other issues so that we can get on with that celebration. And we're hoping to have something in September, after the grand opening in 1925. So we're hoping to do it in September of this year, which would be the 100 years for us. So we would love to have the City of Brentwood be a part of that. It is our community, and we're all together in this. And we very much appreciate your time and energy and support for your local veterans and the Hall that has served the community for over 100 years. Thank you.
Ian?
Oh, good evening, Council. Tim, we're gonna miss you. By the way, one problem I didn't fix was Vasco Road. I just spent an hour and a half rushing over here from Hayward to comment tonight. I was hoping to comment something like, "Wish Heritage FBLA luck as we leave on Thursday for our state leadership conference. We hope to represent Brentwood on a state and then hopefully a national level." I told them, "If they don't make it at states, they're not coming home on the bus back to Brentwood." But, you know, after our previous comment, I wanna just fact-check someone. The NBC Bay Area article that was just mentioned was February 20th, 2025. And it was just Vice Mayor Pearson just saying, "Brentwood fights for everyone's First Amendment right. We love everyone in Brentwood. We don't judge anyone in this town." I was the chairperson for the Youth Commission when we started the Multicultural Fair, which I encourage everyone in this city to go visit this Saturday. I'm sad I'm not gonna be there. So to people who think Brentwood is spending our tax money on special events like a pride parade or Juneteenth, guess what? Brentwood has an economic development grant that Farm Fest can apply for. And if they meet the qualifications, our business tax money will go support that. You guys support so many events, and I appreciate the City Council for supporting all kinds of events. I've been the founding member of Chinese Lunar New Year. I've been at so many events, working first aid, security, everything. It just frustrates me, the hate that's going on in this city. That's why I rushed over here from Hayward. Instead of paying eight bull of my friends, I sat in rush hour traffic. Just so people in Brentwood can understand that they need to sit down, read our paperwork, read our agendas, actually be involved. In the city, they'll understand. Brentwood is not siding on one side. We're trying to celebrate everyone and anyone who lives here. And that's what makes Brentwood the best city in the Bay Area, in my opinion. Even though some of my coworkers say Brentwood's not in the Bay Area, but we don't talk about them. Thank you, Council, again. Tim, we wish you the best up north. Darren, you're gonna do a great job. But fix Vasco, please, come on. It's getting tiring.
The last speaker card I have is Oksana.
Hello, Council Members. I've got the privilege to introduce myself. A couple weeks ago, I think it was the October, no, April 8th meeting, when a lot of people came here to propose a farm fest. I was actually one of the speakers, and two of my children spoke at this specific event. I made my intention very clear when I came here that I absolutely love the diversity of Brentwood, and I also really appreciate the farm and agricultural feel of Brentwood. It's a small town feel. I've also made it very clear at the Debbie Committee last week that I originally lived in San Francisco for several years, and I am a Christian, and I've had a small group that had women that identified with the LGBTQ community. And so, I just kinda wanted to share a little bit of my backstory with some of you. I've shared it at the Debbie Committee in front of Ms. Patinesha and Ms. Fay Maloney, Council Members. And so, I just kinda wanted to give you guys a backstory to me. I'm originally from the Soviet Union. I came in the 80s at five years old. My family was persecuted for religion violently. My grandpa spent a lot of time in prison. I actually have an article, which I just dropped, from the LA Times in 1989, that spoke about him. He was rescued by Amnesty International for being a pastor of an underground church. Our homes were raided by the KGB for having bibles. And so, as a five-year-old, I had to hide a lot when somebody was knocking at our door because neighbors were encouraged to tell on their neighbors if they had bibles, if they were anti-revolutionary, if they had religious beliefs. And so, my concern with Mr. Danny, I've actually seen you, and I've got a chance, you say a lot of great things, but things like xenophobe, homophobe are very alarming to me. And you've just actually encouraged for my children to be checked by the Child Protective Services. My children spoke with very clear intentions for a farm fest, so I'm very concerned for the verbiage that's being used here and also online. I've seen comments at the Contra Costa News. I've also seen comments at our town and the PressNet. And I mean, the division is very scary in this town. And so, I'm asking City Council Members to also consider neutralizing some of these conversations that are happening. So I want every member of Brentwood to be able to feel safe, and they don't have that chill effect that happens when policies are not understood. So thank you so much.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you, Amanda. We are going to now move into informational reports from Council Members, Committees, Liaisons, and Staff. This portion of the agenda is to provide an opportunity for Council Members to report on attendance at events, subcommittee meetings, and entities on which the Council Member has been appointed as liaison, and for staff to provide brief updates and/or information to the Council. And we will start to my left with Council Member Orlemans.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you to everyone for being here tonight. It's always nice looking up and seeing the community so engaged in what we do. Since the last Council meeting on April 8th, I attended several events, but I want to talk for just a second about an app that appears on our city website, 24/7. And I had the opportunity, for the very first time as a Council Member, to use the app. And what it is, is to report deficiencies or things that are wrong here within, excuse me, within the city of Brentwood. And it goes, it's forwarded or directed to whichever staff member would be assigned to fix that. And a citizen reached out to me, asking me how to report a cracked sidewalk in front of a business. Cracked enough that people were tripping on the crack. I was trying to explain to him how to get to the 24/7 app and realized I'm explaining something I've never done myself, so I did it myself. I said, "Send me the picture. Let me put this on the app." Within, I posted it on April 1st, which probably wasn't a great idea because I wasn't, they probably thought I was kidding. But within a couple of days, I got a phone call from Christopher Zeeman at Public Works. And first questioned whether I was really Council Member Orlemans because he thought it was the April Fool's joke. But once he got past that, he had told me they had already made the repairs enough that people weren't tripping on the sidewalk, but had also notified- that people weren't tripping on the sidewalk, but had also notified the church that the responsibility was also theirs to make the extra repairs. I just wanted to reach out or to let staff know, none of this extra work you guys do goes unnoticed, and it's really nice when we can give a compliment to a staff member, especially by name, of what a great job they do. And Chris, wherever you're at, thank you for everything you guys do, it was amazing. Thank you. Now on to the rest of the stuff, sorry. I hosted, or I helped with a barbecue for PAL. The Brentwood Police Department hosted a, an operation here within the city of Brentwood. Forty police officers from the county came out, and PAL, the Police Activities League, did a barbecue for them out at the courtyard. Great event, lots of fun. The Habitat Conservancy Committee that I belong to took us out, or took me out, on a tour of the Conservancy property. Amazing, beautiful tour. And I wanted to thank Abigail Fatman and Joanne Chu, who took me out on the tour to show me the land that was actually used or conserved. The Day of Service at Veterans Park, great kickoff for the service, amazing event, we had a lot of fun. Attended a gender review. And then today, we did Kids in Government. We started off with lunch, showed the group around City Hall, spent a couple hours with them explaining how the dais closed session, the mayor's office, how all of that worked, and now they get to sit up here with us. It was an awesome day, we had a lot of fun. Attended Jim Howard's retirement from Public Works after 21 years of service with the city of Brentwood. He's moving out of the area, but thank you again for all your service. And then we just had a City Council closed session meeting. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for being here. So since our last meeting, I've attended a Seroptimist of the Delta Student Recognition Dinner. It was such a great dinner, and just seeing the talent and the folks that were being recognized was very, very inspiring. And since there are all the youth, it kind of made me happy and feel with a lot of hope for our future. We also, I also attended a roundtable with Senator Cabaldon with various local leaders to discuss issues and policies that we experience locally, and how could the senator be a resource for us from a state level? I also had a meeting with our Economic Development Manager, Ricardo Noguera, and we toured the city. Thank you so much, Ricardo, for showing me everything that your department has been looking at, and our surplus properties and everything that's coming to us in the future. Our economic development works really hard in our city, so thank you, and to also Abraham as well, if you're here. I also attended the Chamber Gala, where businesses, nonprofits, and local residents were recognized for some of their great work in the city for the last year. That was an awesome event. I met with some of the residents in my district. I also attended the Debbie meeting. I also visited with our Brentwood PD Communication Center for National Telecommunications Week. They do a lot of work. I did that job for six years, and it's probably the hardest job I've ever done. So thank you to everyone at Brentwood PD Dispatch for your hard work. You're very much appreciated. I also attended the retirement luncheon for Street Supervisor Jim Howard. Jim's retiring after 21 years of service to our city, and I want to thank him very much for his service. And just hearing him talk today, he's a true testament how our jobs sometimes become our second home, so thank you very much for your service to our city. And just to, a little comment, just for the folks that don't know, City Council isn't necessarily our full-time jobs. We have full-time jobs, some of us, if we're not retired. And so amongst these two weeks, I've also had my full-time job and my colleagues as well, so I just kind of want to reiterate that. Thank you all for being here.
Yes, we do have full-time jobs, so if I don't get back to you right away, I try to get back to you as soon as I can. But since the last time we met, we have been waiting for a park at Windsor Way to be revamped, and a few of us were able to attend. It's a beautiful park on Windsor Way. The community is so excited. I was so happy to be there. And thank you, staff, Park and Rec, because it is amazing. It's great, thank you. Attended the Community Day of Service with our, our mayor was there, I don't think, I'm trying to think of who else was there. So thank you for organizing that with Julie Deck, oh, and Tony was there, and Julie Deck and Amy Tilly. So thank you for all the hard work. I know it's a lot of hours of your own volunteerism that you put into to get that done. We had a Commissioner Dinner where all of our commissioners came out. We got to spend some time with them, so thank you again, staff, for putting that together. That's a nice thing to do because we don't all get to hang out. We had interviews for the Director of Park and Rec, where I met with the Contra Costa Health Department over tobacco, and I had a director's meeting for the Latino Caucus Cal Cities Board.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I was a busy bee, and I actually have three jobs right now. So I don't know how I'm doing it all, and I might fall asleep up here, but I'll, somebody will just tap me and wake me back up. Anyway, I attended the Windsor Way Park Ribbon Cutting, and I just want to say thank you to all of the Parks and Rec staff that made that possible. It was amazing to see all the kids out there. I even tried to climb up, there's a little wall there. Unfortunately, due to several knee surgeries, that will not be possible. But it was really amazing to see all the hard work that went into, put in revamping that park and making it beautiful again. And the Commission Appreciation Dinner, it was just so nice to recognize the commissioners. I do want to thank our administrative staff for getting that all set up. I especially love the cookies that were there that day, but I really enjoyed the ability to break bread with our commissioners and to get to know all of them. And to our commissioners who may watch or listen, thank you so much for all of your time and service. You go underappreciated. I did attend the Parks and Recreation Director Position interview. We had the Debbie Committee meeting, the LUD meeting. And then I volunteered with the Rock Church in Antioch, setting up for their carnival, where we gave out a bunch of furniture and other household goods. There's several Brentwood residents who were like, hey, you're the mayor, you're the, I mean, you're the vice mayor. Oh, my God, I know you, you're the vice mayor. And I was like, no, I'm just a volunteer. The DPPCCC meeting. Went to the Chamber of Commerce celebrating Brentwood Gala, where I got to sit with Councilmember Maloney and had a great time there, recognizing all of the people in our city who do an outstanding job. And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for recognizing them. I went to the going-away party for Tim Ogden that was thrown by the staff. Did the, went to today, got to see one of our engineering managers at the RMS Redefining Mobility Summit in San Ramon, which was awesome to be there. I really liked, one of the speakers said, "A smart city is a collaborative city that engages with others and can, engages with others, even its neighboring cities, and also shares what it knows." And so I thought that was a really awesome takeaway today. Talked about the innovation and all the technology and self-driving buses. And then also, I attended Youth in Government with our lovely youth today, so it was really nice to talk to all of you. And then I, one of the highlights was today, going to the retirement party of Jim Howard, Public Works Street Supervisor with 34 years of experience. It was just really nice to be there. I hope all staff know, we, you all are essential. We appreciate you. And I, one of the things I want to take away with, I talked to one of the street managers, Chris, who I think he's a hot commodity tonight. Councilmember Orlemans brought him up, but one of the things I love is he talked about when a new person comes into Public Works, there is a culture that's trained about how much, how to appreciate and love on the city. And I just really appreciate that, and I think that's something about people who work for the city of Brentwood that I see is just a love for, for working for our city that I don't, you know, I get to serve in a district director position for the state, and I go to other cities that are amazing and loving, but there's something about Brentwood that I just, you can't put my finger on that makes us so special here. So again, I just want to take this moment to wish Mr. Howard a happy retirement. It's his birthday as well today. Mr. Ogden, farewell, happy trails to where you're going. And also, I just really want to say thank you to each and every city staff member who is in this room and who can hear us or whoever played this back. Thank you for everything that you do. And with that, that's everything that I have for the week.
Thank you, everyone. Since our last meeting, I attended the Seroptimist of the Delta Student Recognition and Scholarship Award Event, and I would agree with Councilmember Maloney, very inspiring to hear the good work of all the students that were receiving scholarships and awards that night. Attended an East County Elected Official Roundtable Meeting with New State Senator Chris Cabaldon, again, to discuss what the city needs are, what our priorities are, where we could use state support. Attended the Chamber of Commerce Gala, the Community Day of Service. Karina from the Youth Counsel, or the Youth Commission, mentioned all the stats, so I will repeat that we had over 600 volunteers and 25 projects. The Brentwood Lions provided sausages, the Rotarians provided pancakes, staff was everywhere that day. Finance even had a special team to get their work done. Parks and Rec was very involved in the planning, the city's office, the city manager's office was very involved. There was a lot of behind-the-scenes work that went into that from staff, so thank you to everyone there that was involved. And the Police Department was on hand as well. So thank you to everyone from staff, thanks to all the volunteer planners, there was a lot of people involved in making that happen. And again, I have to repeat Amy Tilly and Julie Deck on that, and I can, cannot wait to start planning for next year. The Commission Appreciation Event to recognize the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, Arts and Youth, really, to second what my colleagues are saying, just a lot of work goes on with those commissions that we don't always hear about, so it was a good time for us to be able to say thank you to all of them. Attended the Debbie Committee, Diversity, Equity, Belonging, and Inclusion. Attended the Planning Commission Meeting, actually, I watched that one on TV. Had a meeting to discuss the Ag Core Economic Development Opportunities and the Urban Limit Line Agenda Item that's going to be eventually coming to Contra Costa County Supervisors, but will also be coming forward to City Council for discussion with Ron Nun. I was on a panel for East County Elected Officials to, again, discuss Brentwood's specific successes and challenges with elected officials from Oakley and Antioch and local school board members. Attended a culinary showcase with the Heritage High School Culinary Academy through their Canvas Restaurant. Very exciting, it was actually nine courses, and there were students and hostesses and servers and chefs, and everybody was very, very motivated to get involved and did a fantastic job. And I really think that one of our local restaurants, in case anyone's listening, should be opening up a student chef night. And then last, the Brentwood Lions Youth in Government Annual Event. We have some Lions here that are going to receive a proclamation on that, but this is the 16th year this event has happened. All of the students that have been, that are sitting here now had incredible questions. I'm sure the ones that were not meeting with councils specifically had great questions too. And we appreciate your families and your teachers for supporting your efforts here. If you go to Liberty, please mention to your friends, we had a lot of heritage participation. We need more Liberty students, and potentially some of our other schools, our alternate schools as well. But hugely successful program, and just a really, an honor to be a part of that. And then we are going to move into--
Oh, Amanda. Yes. I just, as the Chair of the Debbie Committee, I just wanted to clarify on a public record that at the Debbie Committee meeting, needing the mayor and the council member, did, did come to the meeting in their individual capacity as residents. So I just wanted to make a public record, I know that was in your informational reports, but I just wanted to clarify that, as I recall it, you were there in your individual capacities as residents of the city of Brentwood and not in your mayoral or your council member.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for that. So we are going to move into consent.
Before, part of it is to give a staff update, can I just give--
Absolutely.
Or a couple of things. It was mentioned the Youth Commission Cultural Fair is this Saturday from noon to 3:00, the 26th. For residents, so residents know, on May 6th, the application for design review for the fire station will be back before the Planning Commission. And at your next City Council meeting on May 13th will be the update to the tobacco ordinance.
Thank you for that. Okay, so moving into the consent, we're going to have some proclamations presented in person as well, so those items will be presented after we vote. Can I get a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in. Yes.
Quick clarification, there was a slight change to one of the exhibits that was attached to item F23 regarding the flag policy.
Okay.
And just in the interest of full transparency, if the city clerk could share my screen for one minute. In this first sentence, in adopting this policy, the City Council declares that the city's flag polls are not intended. Polls was inadvertently removed, and that will be restored to its rightful place. So if the maker of the motion, thank you, Amanda, that's efficient, if the maker of the motion would consider including that typographical correction, and the secondar of the motion would indicate their support for that, staff would appreciate your direction in that regard. Thank you.
The motion is so amended to include what was just mentioned by our city attorney.
I second that.
All in favor.
And if I can read the ordinance titles--
Yes, please.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Section 8.36.035 of the Brentwood Municipal Code regarding weeds, rubbish, or other flammable materials growing upon or in front of parcels within the city of Brentwood. Any other ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Brentwood amending Brentwood Municipal Code Chapter 7.02 to address camping on city-owned property.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
And no opposition. We are going to start with item number F2, and Vice Mayor Pearson will present.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ooh, you always do that. Ooh, it's a hot mic. It's too short for me. Thank you. Pull that down, Oksana. I'll pull it back up. I'm a little taller than you are. All right. I was contacted by Musa Tariq, the Policy Coordinator for the Council on American Islamic Relations, from the San Francisco Bay Area office. He asked that I consider talking to the Brentwood City Council about adopting a proclamation to honor and recognize the contributions of American, of the American Muslim community and recognize April as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. As you all know, I'm a proponent of diversity, and I, in response to that, immediately brought it back to the council to see if we can issue a proclamation and recognition. And I'm so grateful that our council agrees about diversity. And I'm really excited today because this is the beauty of diversity. My lovely neighbors next door to me, and I get emotional because they're so sweet. Sorry. They're, they're the most amazing people I know. We don't, we don't share the same faith, but we still have the same heart for God, and I'm so grateful for them. My kids call them our cousins, high cousins. And I'm emotional because my, my neighbor, my grandmother was turning 90, and her teeth, her dentures fell out, and they broke, and she was embarrassed. It was the day of her birthday party. And my neighbor came to my house, and she's a dentist, and she made a mold for my grandmother. And my grandmother got to go to her 90th birthday party with the set. She ran and had the mold done, it was like all done in one day. And my grandmother was just so grateful. And so I think that's the beauty in how we can be of different faiths, but also still love on one another like family. And so, sorry I'm getting so emotional, but I do, I love my neighbors, so I'm grateful to see them here tonight, and it's an honor for me to be able to bring this to their community today. Sorry. In response, the council brought this forward, and so I was so grateful when I reached out to the Aman Akbar, Akbuk Bakar, I'm so sorry if I annihilate your name, Egalhar Gargri, sorry, of the local Masjid Brentwood Muslim Community Center, to share the request and extend our appreciation and to grant this honor to him and his community. So it is my honor to present this proclamation to him today in recognition of the American Muslim community's positive impact on our city and beyond. So sir, if you can please come stand here. I'd like to present this to you and read the following. American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas the city of Brentwood recognizes and honors the rich cultural, religious, and historical contributions of American Muslims to our community, state, and nation. And whereas the theme unity and diversity highlights the strength we find in embracing and celebrating our differences while working together towards common goals. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Brentwood hereby recognizes April 2025 as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month. Thank you so much, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak. Thank you so much, and I'd like to give you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much. Which side should I be facing?
Oh, you can face that way if the camera--
All right.
In the name of God, the most gracious, compassionate, the most merciful, Madam Mayor, Susanna Meyer, Vice Mayor, Patenisha Pearson, esteemed members of the Brentwood City Council, respected guests, neighbors, and fellow citizens. My name is Abu Bakr El Garguri, and I come before you today not just as a representative of the Muslim community, but as someone who was shaped by this city and one of the bricks that built this city. I was born in Corvallis, Oregon, but I was formed and blessed right here in Brentwood for all of my adult life, since I was 18 years old when I came, young but full of vision as the first Imam of the newly-founded Brentwood Muslim Community Center. What I found was more than just a city. I found a home, a home with sunlit orchards, beautiful parks, and trees with flowers, clean, safe, wide-open streets, yes, but also a home with open hearts, strong families, and a spirit of resilience that I could feel in every conversation, every handshake, and neighborly nod and smile. As of this year, I have spent more time in California than I have in my home state of Oregon. This month, as hard as it was to do, my number finally changed from a 541 to a 925. And this time, I've seen Brentwood evolve and transform. In the year 2000, just over 23,000 people lived here. Now, we number over 65,000 strong, and most of us are new. This city has been built, brick by brick, by people who came here with hope. People like our beloved Tim Ogden, may God bless him and make him a source of goodness wherever he goes. People who brought their stories, their dreams, their families, and said, "Let's grow something beautiful." I came from Oregon, just one of many who sought something greater, and I believe we are building it together. Just look at the tapestry of the impassioned speakers today from Michael Clement and the lady with the beautiful story of surviving the Soviet Union and religious persecution, to the young man who came from Hayward through rush hour traffic, as horrible as it is to say, his piece. We have with us today our President Tanvir, who also owns a well-established business here in Brentwood. We also have Muhammad Sadiq, who is retired from the Coast Guard and a former member of the Rotary. Also, he was a photographer for One Ten Magazine, and he photographed me when they ran an article on my life with the community with Don Huntington, the late Don Huntington, for those who knew him. We have Sadiqullah, aka Ratab, who is one of the top wrestling coaches and referees, who is one of the top wrestling coaches and referees in the nation. He'll be going with Team USA to the Olympics soon enough, as well as many others, too many to name, God bless them, one and all. When I became a leader in our local Muslim community, I saw firsthand the beauty of this city and its people. Our Muslim brothers and sisters are not outsiders. We are your neighbors, your colleagues, your classmates, your customers at the grocery store. We are your doctors, engineers, business owners, and tax guys. Some of our members have been part of Brentwood for decades, others were born right here in the soil, and every one of us carries a desire to give, to contribute, and to be part of this incredible journey. This proclamation declaring April as Muslim Appreciation Month is not just a gesture. It is a recognition that our city is strengthened by its different bricks. To our community, that is a fast-growing segment of the city of Brentwood and felt disenfranchised by our last mayor, it is a welcome and beautiful statement that says, "We see you, we hear you, and you belong." And so I thank you, Madam Mayor Susanna Meyer, Vice Mayor Patenisha Pearson, and each and every member of this council for standing on the side of unity, for saying with clarity and conviction that Brentwood will not be a city that fears difference, but a city that celebrates it. Studies have shown that Muslim communities reduce crime, not increase it. According to research published in the Sociist Journal, neighborhoods with higher concentrations of Muslim Americans actually experience lower rates of crime, making their neighborhoods safer and more beautiful, which isn't a coincidence, as the Prophet of God Muhammad ﷺ taught us that "all creatures are the dear dependents of God, and the most beloved of them to God are those who are the most beneficial to others." And the Quran teaches us that God loves those who treat our well-meaning neighbors with righteous and equitable behavior. As such, we proudly donate literal tons of food to our local community every year, host daily dinners every night of Ramadan. You all are welcome. And we're proud also to have our students bring home, you know, some trophies that the mayor got to see, winning medals in 21 of the 23 or 24 categories of competition in the Bay Area Science Olympiad in our tiny little community-funded school. So, we do strive to make our community better. But let me be real with you, these are trying times. There are loud voices outside these chambers that traffic in fear, in ignorance, in hatred. Islamophobia is not a theory, it's a real struggle, and a heavy cloud of ignorance we fight to rise above. And yet, despite the winds against us, we stand tall, we stand firm, we stand here in Brentwood believing not just in tolerance, but in unity. President Donald Trump once said, "We are a nation that believes in religious liberty, tolerance, and respect." Well, we are here to hold America to that promise, not as a plea, but as a rightful expectation. Former President Joe Biden said, "Hate will not prevail in America." Well, I hope he's right at least about that. That is not just rhetoric, it's a responsibility, and it starts right here in Brentwood. Notice, both of them appeal to the shared American spirit of unity and togetherness and neighborliness. In this city, in this moment, we say clearly, hate has no home here, not in our schools, not in our neighborhoods, not in our hearts. Dr. King once said, "We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny." And Al Hajj Malik al-Shabazz reminded us that our dignity is not something to be begged for, but something to be lived with boldness and honor. So let this be our declaration tonight, that we will not shrink ourselves to make others comfortable. We will contribute, we will lead, we will serve, and we will rise as a part of Brentwood's heartbeat, not just in our mosques, but in our schools, our parks, our businesses, and our streets. To every child here tonight, Muslim or otherwise, I say, "The city belongs to you. Build it with compassion, shape it with justice, light it with faith, and never doubt that you are part of the American story." We are here, we are proud, we are Brentwood. Thank you, and may peace be upon you all.
I'd like to come up and take a photo. I'll take one here.
Anybody who wants to join, Insha'Allah.
Everyone can come if they want to take a-- Moving into our next proclamation, if we could have Fred Ginsler with the Brentwood Lions, please approach. And we'll have everyone come up for the picture once we're done. Fred has been a Brentwood Lion for how many years, Fred? I can't even guess.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay. And I've known you for 10 years?
At least.
Something like that. And I'm a Brentwood Lion myself, so I'm absolutely honored right now to present this proclamation to the Brentwood Lions in response to their hard work with youth and government. And once we're done speaking, by the way, I want all of the youth and government students to come down and be part of this picture. The Lions have, especially Fred, has taken this on for 16 years, working with local high schools to introduce them to the idea of local government and how they can be a part of it, and how they can impact what happens in their own communities. And so, it's a wonderful chance for City Council and city staff to work directly with students one time, one day, and then come back for a mock City Council meeting later, and hope that we are able to have some impact on students and their ability to make change, and their feelings that they matter, and their voices can be heard. So Fred, I would like to honor you with this proclamation. We have a few proclamations tonight, so you're getting the full one. For Youth and Government Day, whereas the city of Brentwood, the Brentwood Lions Club, and Heritage and Liberty High Schools have collaborated for over 15 years to offer the Youth and Government Program to local high school seniors. And whereas the city of Brentwood deems it important to recognize and honor these, those participating in the 2025 Youth and Government Program, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize April 22, 2025 as Youth and Government Day. And I would like to offer you the chance to say a few words, Fred.
Sure. I'll be brief. This program, Youth and Government, is quite unique. There's no other community in Northern California that offer it to their high schoolers, but it's a totally immersive program, which makes it different. The students, they met this morning, they took a tour of facilities throughout the city, the waste management facility behind closed doors at the police department, which is a unique experience. But what I'd like to emphasize, and this is my first time ever in 16 years making a comment, I wish to thank the city of Brentwood. They've opened up their arms to this program, which makes it unique, because there's no other community that does this. So I thank you so much, and I'm hoping for another 16 years, okay?
Thank you, Fred. And if we could have the Brentwood Lions come forward, and all of the students and City Council, anyone else who wants to be a part of this. A special thank you to Amanda Chaney, who stepped in and led today in the unexpected absence of our regular host of this event, Stacy Dempsey.
(inaudible)
Did you hear me thanking you, Amanda?
Oh, yeah.
We have two more. Our next one is for the Office of the Municipal Clerk. This is our city clerk, Amanda McFay, and as you can see-- As you can see by tonight, she is a behind-the-scenes person who prefers to be behind the scenes, but gets a lot of things done, organizes the City Council meetings and the red agendas, and works at the city manager's office as part of that team, and that really solid team that kind of gets everything prepared for these meetings, and you do so much that nobody really knows about, but also is managing the governance for the city and helps City Council to understand some of what their roles are and where we're supposed to start and end. So I thank you for all of those things, but I do want to present this to you and then read some of our wheraces. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is a vital part of local government, serving as a link between the citizens, the City Council, and city departments, and whereas it is fitting to recognize the essential role they play in our community and express appreciation for their unwavering service, now therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood hereby recognizes May 5 through May 11, 2025 as Municipal Clerk's Week. Thank you, Amanda. Did you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of expected that.
Okay, so the final, or the last proclamation for the evening, is a proclamation for National Police Week. But I want to introduce the recipient of this, so give me just a minute to read off his resume. This is Officer Christopher McBride. You can come on up, Chris. He graduated from the Police Academy in 2016, has been a police officer here with the city of Brentwood since 2017. He's a highly dedicated, engaged officer in our community, takes pride in his ability to build relationships with residents, visitors, youth, as well as our business owners. He's a field training officer, a mentor, he's part of the mentor team here at Brentwood Police Department. He's a crisis negotiator, first aid, and CPR instructor. He was selected as Officer of the Year this past year, which is a nomination of other officers, so it's not like the admin gave him the award, it's by his fellow coworkers. Tonight, I want to thank Officer McBride for being a great leader and for making such a big difference in our community. We're honored to have you here to accept the proclamation, recognizing May 11 through May 17 as National Police Week. And if, Alex, you'd like to come down for a second?
Can I say a couple of things?
I'll let him after the proclamation? After the proclamation? Let him say?
No, I was--
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So-- Go ahead.
National Police Week proclamation, whereas the theme for National Police Week 2025, "Committed to Serve Together," highlights the importance of unity, collaboration, and teamwork among law enforcement officers, first responders, and the communities they serve. And whereas the city of Brentwood is proud of the unwavering commitment demonstrated by our police department to protect and serve our residents, ensuring safety and well-being throughout our city, and now therefore be it proclaimed that City Council of the City of Brentwood hereby recognizes May 11 through May 17, 2025, as National Police Week.
Hello. Okay. I just wanted to say, congratulations. There's been times where I've seen you working, you didn't know I was there, whether it's a vehicle stop or a call for service. You've led with such amazing compassion and integrity, and I don't think there's been a time that I've seen you without a smile on your face. So you're the kind of person that, when I see you, I just want to start smiling, just because you're always smiling. So thank you so much for everything that you do for our city and keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Would you like to say--
Um, I don't have a speech prepared tonight, I'm sorry.
I don't have a speech prepared tonight, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be the recipient of such a prestigious award, and also to now be in the company of some of Brentwood PD's finest officers. And I don't, I don't take that lightly. This is an accomplishment that I'll cherish for the rest of my life, and I just hope that I can continue to make you all proud and serve you to the best of my ability. So thank you.
That is one of the more inspiring parts of being on City Council is to be able to recognize members of the community for the work they're doing. And so thank you to all who took part in this. It's, it's an honor for us to honor you, and it really, it always uplifts us to, to be able to do that kind of thing. So thank you for being a part of that. Okay, so we are, I guess we need another? No, we already did that. The motion to, no, okay. Moving into business items, we are going to, into item number G point one, approve and authorize a city manager to execute a successor memorandum of understanding between the City of Brentwood and the Brentwood Employees Association Public Works Division for the period of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027. The presentation will be by Sakari Bashir, Director of Human Resources. Thank you, Sakari.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item before you tonight for consideration is a successor contract between the City of Brentwood and the Brentwood Employees Association Public Works Division. The successor contract would be effective July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027. The city negotiators began to meet with the Brentwood Employees Association Public Works Division in February of 2024. In January of 2025, we reached a tentative agreement, which was ratified by the bargaining group, Public Works, the Public Works Division, in March of 2025. So this item before you tonight for consideration is that successor contract, which includes wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. Staff is available to answer questions if council has any.
Thank you, Sakari. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Okay, moving into public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed from those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. I do not have any speaker cards in person, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. Any council discussion on this item?
Well, no discussion, I just want to thank all of the employees who, I know it took a long time, and I'm just glad we've come to a resolution. And like Vice Mayor Pearson said, we appreciate all you do, so I think this is just another step, so thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion?
Just thank you.
Okay. Thank you to everyone involved with this process. It was, it was a good positive ending, so we're happy about that. And if there are no other questions or comments, we will take a motion?
I'll make a motion. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a successor MOU between the city and the Brentwood Employees Association Public Works Division for the period of July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027.
Sorry, I don't understand.
I'll read it again.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition, the item passes. I don't know if anybody heard that, there was Siri answered from somebody's phone, so. Okay, so that, that item passes. Do we need to read anything? A resolution on that one, right? Okay, moving into item G two. Again, Sakari Bashir, our Director of Human Resources will present the next item, appointing Darren Gale as interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before council tonight for consideration is to adopt a resolution to appoint Darren Gale as the interim city manager. With the recent resignation of the current city manager, it leaves an opening, and the city is required by MUNICO to have a city manager in place. So with that, the council has selected Darren Gale to serve as its interim city manager until the council conducts a full search for the next city manager. Staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Sakari. Any clarifying questions? Okay, moving into public comment.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. I do have one public comment, but not for this item. I have no speaker cards in person and no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Any discussion? And barring that, any motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution appointing Darren Gale as our interim city manager.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition for the item passes. Congratulations, Mr. Gale.
Thank you.
You need a new sign. Moving into requests for future agenda items, if you have a new agenda request, this is the time to bring that up.
Staff already has its yours and mine dual agenda request, and I just think the public needs to know that the county is relooking at the urban limit line. So for everyone who says, we love our farm town, we love all of that, we need to make sure that we, for me, that we look at that line that they're proposing, which right now is the same line that we have now, and make sure you send your feedback into the county, but we will have an agenda item on it. So it's kind of a future agenda item, but they're already going to take care of it.
Any other items?
Okay, so I was just going to say, so for clarification, it won't come back for a second vote, as we usually do. Councilmember Mendoza has already talked through the process.
We actually, we both submitted a written request for this agenda item, so Councilmember Mendoza's comments were for the sake of public notification.
And I'm just saying, for the rest of you, this won't come back for another vote because it's already been pushed forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. It's hard to believe that we are where we are. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition, so we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone.